Greenville City Council will come to order. Please call the roll.
Ely?
Here.
Godwin?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Rogers? Schmidt?
Here.
White?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
I can give everyone the stand for the predilection.
The predilection certifying of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, God and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as a rule.
Evening, everyone. City council members, you were emailed out the minutes. They will stand approved unless there's objection to make a correction or addition. Okay? You were also emailed the current financial report. I will take a motion to accept or deny that.
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Godwin to accept the current financial report discussion. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Approval of the agenda, there is two things we need to... There's a resolution number 10 to add for the end... Help me out. That is for...
Tax levies.
The tax levy that's coming up.
Final piece of legislation.
Yep. And then also, under number nine, there is some changes on that. There's the equipment maintenance for park amount of $10,000. And then the maintenance for public transportation of $567.
That's under nine?
Yeah, under the supplemental ordinance.
It's adding.
It's adding the...
So, the supplemental for the $10,000 for the park is being added due to the tornado damage. We've not appropriated all of the insurance money. Matt's just kind of in... The superintendent's been just trying to get those repairs done as we go. Next council meeting, we will be coming back with a supplemental for the actual rebuild of some of the structures that are completely done. So, we're going to go over all of those numbers and get some... He's getting the final estimate in on that. And then the transit needed to be added due to there was an accident. And that's an insurance claim that there was a reimbursement of the insurance claim. So, those funds are used for the repair of the transit bus.
And that transit was how much?
$567. We do have $1,000 deductible, so the actual damage was $1,500. Okay? You're welcome.
Moved to approve the agenda as amended.
Moved by Mr. Schmidt to approve the agenda as amended. Discussion. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right. Moving on. Next, our public hearing section... Session. If anyone would like to come up and speak.
I really didn't think I'd have anything today, except I worked the gate at number three. And we had a lady sitting there for over two hours waiting for a transit today. So, I don't know if it's... I heard about the accident. I knew that they were short on that. They said they were short on help. But she sat there, and that bench has no sun protection, which we are trying to fight for some kind of covering for that bench. But she wasn't really complaining much. She said that she had been waiting... And when I knew she had been waiting well for over an hour and a half. And I know I've been up here when you've been discussing the transit problem. So, I'm only bringing this to your attention, that she sat there for over two hours waiting for somebody to come get her. So, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hello? I just want to give a little update on what's going on at the police department. A little over a month ago, I was promoted to chief. One of the first things that we did was we got a lot of feedback on some of it from you guys, some of it from internally, some of it from citizens about... And it was kind of all over the place. But the one thing that people really wanted was more engagement with us and with the community. So, what we did was create a community outreach team. That's going to be sort of a multifaceted program, but the main focus is going to be community engagement. So, a lot of community events coming up. You're going to see myself, the lieutenants. Officer Borowski's going to be on that team, if you know him. He's really good with the kids. And dispatcher Mary Fox, she wanted to be a part of it, and she's really good with the public. We think it'll be good for sort of rebranding and going the direction that we want to go. With community events coming up, we have the car show September 7th. That's an all-day thing, so you'll probably see us up there. September 14th is kind of a big day for us. We're doing Coffee with the Cops at A and B from 9:00 to 10:30 that morning. And then at the Yalx, they're having a Family Fun Day from 11:00 to 2:00. So, we're really looking forward to that. This year, the Yalx is hosting the Family Fun Day. But in the future, we want to get partnered with them. And we have some funds for like crime prevention and drug awareness stuff that we want to get involved with them on. With our hiring process, we have the ability to have 28 officers. We have 23 right now. Lieutenant Boyer, Lieutenant Monan went to a recruitment summit today in Columbus. So, we really want to kind of get back to the roots of recruiting and what people are looking for, like what we can offer. And so, that's kind of what they were doing today, sort of getting the educational piece of how we can build back up. We just did a patrol test last week, and 11 applicants took the test. Only four passed. So, and out of those four, one certified to be a cop. The other three, if we do decide to hire one of those three, it's going to be a year or more before we can get them on the streets. So, we're looking at ways to kind of revamp that system and hopefully streamline our hiring process. We want good candidates, but we also need to find a better way. I mean, that's just being honest with you. With dispatch, we have one opening right now, technically two, but we're only going to fill one of those two. And we did offer a conditional offer of employment to a lady. We're still going through a process there. But once we get her hired, we will be pretty much fully staffed there. With the patrol, I'm going to let later on, if you guys have questions, there's some legislation on some things that we're looking... We have a lot of mandatory overtime with that. We're looking for ways to eliminate burnout with the officers and figure out ways to keep officers here. They're working... We're coming in Monday mornings and finding out that they worked, you know, 16 hours of overtime over the weekend, plus, you know, their normal shifts. We want to find ways to make sure that they have a life outside of here. With our staffing as well, with those 23 that we have, right now, we have two out on medical leave. So, you take two away from 23, 21. And then in September, we're going to have a third officer out on medical leave. And that's pretty much for the foreseeable future, the rest of this year, I'd say, like November-ish. Hopefully, we'll get a couple of those back. But it's kind of depending on their recovery times and whatnot. And then next week, we have two officers that go back to the school, SROs, and two more on top of that. So, we're working with what we got. I think Lieutenant Boyer, Lieutenant Monan have some good ideas for recruiting. And we're really excited about one of the applicants that we have. We have to go through the process with him, but it's just one... It's like we're just putting gum on the hole, really, though. So, we really want to find ways to get back up. So, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you for what you do.
Thanks, Ryan.
Anyone else? Public hearing. All right. Moving on to administration reports. Mr. Mayor?
I really don't have anything I want to talk about specifically. There's been... Last night, there was a situation that I was made aware of, some parking problems on Central because of the fair, parking on one side of the street. And some people were complaining that, you know, that they were disabled or whatever, and they didn't have access to where they usually park because there's no parking on one side of the street. Unfortunately, and this is the thing I want to mention, the complaints keep coming anonymously. And if people want to contact us and if they have a concern, I would invite them to email me at jeff@jwhitaker@cofgreenville.org. Give me your name, address, and a phone number of contact so we can actually deal with your problem. Going on Facebook anonymously doesn't get it done, and it just creates more and more of a situation. And I talked with the chief about it this morning, and there wasn't a thing to be done about it because we didn't have a name or anyone to talk to. How do we communicate if we're going to be operating anonymously on social media? It's very frustrating. And quite frankly, we get a lot more done if we have points of contact. So, that's all I'm going to say.
Mr. Mayor, would you be able to start marrying and say something about the issue with Central that we don't want?
Sure.
We've been called down there several times tonight.
You must step up here so we bring you here, Jason. Thank you.
We've been called down there several times tonight. We try to get ahold of them if we have a phone number. If we don't, we could call the lieutenant, have them paged. If they don't move it, then we cite them.
Yeah. I heard the announcement last night. I was there, and I thank you guys for that. Again, my suggestion for people with any kind of complaints regarding the city, let's not operate on an anonymous basis. You citizens, we want to work with you. I get paid... I want to be the mayor of this city and actually handle problems. But if you're not going to give us your name and phone number and address, I don't know how to do that. So, it's a little frustrating. I pass.
All right. Safety Service Director is on vacation today, so he is not here. Mr. Law Director, Ms. Reiman?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just want to touch here briefly on three pieces of legislation. One is to approve the contract with Greenville City Schools. We do a two-year contract with them every year. It's our hope, and what that contract states is that we have three SRO officers. That's our goal, and we can get staffing there. As Chief Benji had already talked about, you know, staffing is our primary concern. The contract with the school, we're actually in a pretty great situation. The school covers 99% of that officer's salary while they're at the school, which you see a lot of communities that do it kind of on a 50-50 basis, or even the police department doing that. So, we're very fortunate to have a good relationship with the superintendent, Doug Fries, and the schools. Because the other nice part about that is to the extent that we can provide those kids with a positive interaction with the police, the hope is that that reduces further crime later. Other piece of legislation that we had, you also heard Chief Benji talk about issues with staffing. And one of the pieces of legislation we have allows the two lieutenants and the chiefs to cover some shifts, patrol shifts. Now, the legislation is very specific in that those shifts have to be offered to all the patrol officers first. They can't just take the shifts. And they can only take those shifts if it's going to save somebody from being forced in, and it's outside of their normal working hours, so outside of 8:00 to 4:00. And again, the whole thing that we're fighting with is we already know that we're down on officers, and we don't want to burn out the ones that we have, that we still have here as we're trying to fill the gaps. And so, the hope is that this is a temporary thing. But again, we're trying to look at creative ways to make sure that we don't lose any more of the officers that we have. We kind of talked this through with the union to make sure that they didn't have any complaints. We're not creating the real on this. We reached out to other police departments that have a similar system in place that allows their officers to pick up these things. And so, that's what that piece of legislation is. And then finally, we do have... We had talked about a little bit last meeting, but we currently have a temporary moratorium in on recreation... Recreational marijuana sales. There's legislation tonight that would make that a permanent ban on recreational marijuana sales for cultivation and sales within the city on a commercial basis. And then that would be something in the future, if you wanted to revisit, we could. But this essentially permanently extends that one-year moratorium until council would choose to act again in the future.
A question?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the current timeline of the moratorium? Is it up now?
I believe it... We looked at it last... I believe it's up in December.
In December?
That's correct.
Okay. And I get... I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask, but since you're the law director, I guess it could be.
Yes, ma'am.
So, most of the time, we don't... I mean, we do have people come forward. I mean, I had a letter that came to me, and I did not... An email that came to me, and I was out of town, so I didn't see it until, you know, just this morning, asking for definitions. So, I would like, number one, if you could have a conversation with me at some point?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to ask about is something as vital as this. We have... I mean, I have my own personal opinion, but I'm asking a general question. The general question is, since the citizens of the state of Ohio passed recreational marijuana, where do we fall in line with their criteria of allowing that or not allowing it? Ohio Revised Code, super...
So, the Ohio Revised Code, while it allows it, it allows the municipality to opt out of it. And so, that's kind of where we're at. In terms of the legislation that's before you, we kind of talked about this a little bit last meeting. You know, ultimately, it's your votes to decide what you want and what you don't want and the process you want to get there. And so, if you would like to see it go through the planning and zoning, that's obviously an option that you all have. And so, there's no perfect right or wrong answer. Part of it is depending on how controversial we think a subject's going to be or the extent of changes that we're going to make. Dictate a lot of times how much we do on the front end.
Mike, why do... Just for knowledge for everybody, why do we consider the moratorium the right approach?
So, in terms of... I guess we're a little confused by your statement, Mr. White. The right approach is in terms of why it was banning recreational sales? So, again, it comes down to there's no right or wrong answer. I don't think there's a ton of data out there regarding the benefits or the negatives of it. And ultimately, it's your vote about whether or not it is the right or wrong approach.
Just by having a moratorium makes it not possible. But by not having a moratorium makes it possible, but doesn't make it happen. Is that the right way to say that?
Essentially. I think if you get rid of the moratorium, you're going to run into zoning issues that if somebody applies at a business, they would be able to start a business. Because currently, in our planning and zoning, it's not specifically addressed. It's... Medical marijuana sales are, but the recreational side is not. And so, if you recall, we went through medical dispensaries, probably two years ago, and put in specific regulations for them. But there are not specific regulations currently for recreational sales.
So, would we be better off with the regulations and then see where it goes, or the moratorium to not allow the regulations to come forward? That's what I'm trying to...
And that's something I will defer to you.
I guess I understand the question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so, I guess that was part of when the discussion was talked. You know, ultimately, I draft legislation that I'm asked to bring forward to council. The mayor at the last meeting asked me to draft legislation that would prohibit recreational sales. That's kind of... That's where we're at. That's my role in this process.
And I understand that. I think... I understand where you're coming from. I think that we... I guess procedurally, I'd like to see it go through the channels, but that's my opinion. I'm one of this many.
Fair. Well, primarily, the reason why we asked for the legislation in the first place was, you know, how do we have drug education, drug awareness programs in our school, yet we allow dispensaries within the city limits? Go ahead, sell it. For recreational use. That's the question. Don't we have the same education on alcohol? I mean... I'm sorry? Don't we also talk to kids and educate them on the effects of abusing alcohol? I'm just trying to draw the comparison. They're both legal. So, what makes it... I can only... I can only base my thoughts and my opinions on the whole matter based upon personal experience, and it wasn't pretty. I don't want to go any further with that.
Fine. Any other questions for law director?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, sir. You know, what I seen on TV for the marijuana sales lease, you know, 30 days at $4 million in sales in four weeks. Then I think it's $10 on every $50 it's spent, and plus the 7.25 tax on top of that. I tried to reach out to a couple cities this week and try to figure out, you know, what the income is for the city. I know we've been talking for the last three months about budgets, you know, and our bottom line. And maybe after a week, I know that people that go to Michigan, I've talked to people, and they go, well, we go to Michigan, so it's cheaper. And now, they got a place in Picklewood that's over there across from Home Depot that sells it. And now, they can just go right over there and get it. So, that's revenue or money that the city's not getting. You know, it's going to Picklewood, or it's going to Dayton, or it's going whatever. And who's to say that, you know, some little town around here gets it, and they get a tax revenue off of it? But they're still bringing it to the city of Greenville. And I was mowing this week, and I seen it growing a bunch of places, here and down. And I mean, big plants. So, it's out there. Chief making of that, would you? Follow him around. They're under the... They're out. Yeah. But, all right, I'm done.
Any other discussion or any other questions for law director? All right. Move on to city auditor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll take any questions. I did want to mention that we did pass that legislation for the tax department, for the attorney general, that Mr. Reiman brought last meeting. And Mr. Greggs did go to some training today, so that should be going forward here very, very shortly. So, I'll take any questions.
All right. Moving on. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Committee reports, we have none. I did have a request to extend the water commercial meters.
Water meter.
That was due to the first meeting in September. So, you want that to second meeting?
Might have to be on in October.
Okay. So, October the 1st?
Second. Second meeting.
October 15th. I'll extend that.
What I was just told.
Okay. All right. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. First, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Village Green to provide transit services. This resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into contract with Village Green for transit services that provide the city with compensation in the amount of $22.65 per each person each way.
That was the second reading.
The third.
Oh, that was the third.
I agree.
Yep.
Moved to adopt the resolution?
Moved by Mr. Schmidt to adopt the resolution. Discussion.
Just one question. This is a one-year contract, right?
This is... Yep.
It's a one-year contract.
Yep.
Yeah. I believe in the contract, there's still like a 30-day out, or 60-day out to cancel by default, correct? But yes, it's...
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
I'm staying.
Okay. That motion passes. Next, we have a resolution certifying noxious weeds mowing trash removal 2024. This does have an emergency.
A resolution certifying to the Dark County Auditor, certain amounts to be entered upon tax duplicates as liens representing expenses incurred by the city of Greenville, Ohio for its services rendered in cutting and destroying noxious weeds or removing litter pursuant to authority granted by sections 731.51 to 731.53 inclusive of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring emergency. This resolution will assess noxious weed mowing and trash removals to multiple parcels. This resolution has an emergency clause.
Make a motion to suspend the rules on this resolution, read it by title only, second and third time.
Moved by Mr. Godwin to suspend the rules to give this resolution second, third, read by title only. Discussion. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
A resolution certifying to the Dark County Auditor, certain amounts to be entered upon tax duplicates as liens representing expenses incurred by the city of Greenville, Ohio for its services rendered in cutting and destroying noxious weeds or removing litter pursuant to authority granted by section 731.51 to 731.53 inclusive of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring emergency. Resolution certifying to the Dark County Auditor, certain amounts to be entered upon tax duplicates as liens representing expenses incurred by the city of Greenville, Ohio for its services rendered in cutting and destroying noxious weeds or removing litter pursuant to authority granted by section 731.51 to 731.53 inclusive of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring emergency.
Moved to adopt the emergency clause?
Moved by Mr. Schmidt to adopt the emergency clause. Discussion.
Mr. President, just... Mr. President, just for clarification, why does this have an emergency clause?
It has to do with the timing of the legislation. We can only certify things to the auditor once a year, and it's by September. And so we wait as long as possible so we can get as many of the sales as possible, but to make sure that it goes into effect at the last possible minute and still gets to them. That's why we do these assessments with an emergency clause.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the emergency clause? Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Move by Mr. Schmidt to adopt this resolution. Discussion.
Yeah, I had a question for Ryan, but he's not here. But Ken may be able to answer it. On the mowing on the properties, I seen some was like a hundred and fifty, then the other ones were like two hundred for mowing.
So the mowing property fees went up. I can't remember exactly when, but those-
Because I thought we raised it to two hundred.
We did.
Then it's just a split timing.
There's a split timing that we didn't get to collect the ones from last year. Do you remember when it went up for sure, Mike? I don't-
It was earlier in this year when we changed it.
Yeah, so it was like Mr. Reiman was saying, the latter part of the year, we couldn't collect all of them. They were still mowing, so those were the old ones. And then when they went up to the two hundred, then that's why there's two different amounts.
Yeah, because I thought we raised it, and then I'd seen the one fifty, and it's like, it's an empty yard or something?
No, it's a flat rate.
So it meant twenty, twenty-three days.
Yeah, it's a flat rate. You're welcome.
Any other discussions? Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moving on to number three. We have a resolution certifying assessments for sidewalk project.
A resolution certifying to the Dark County Auditor, certain amounts to be entered upon tax duplicates as liens representing expenses incurred by the city of Greenville, Ohio for its services rendered in phase one of the sidewalk project and declaring an emergency. This resolution will assess the properties included in phase one of the sidewalk project. This resolution has an emergency clause.
Move to suspend the rules, give this resolution second, third reading by title only.
Move by Mr. Schmidt to suspend rules, give this resolution second, third reading by title only. Discussion. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
A resolution certifying to the Dark County Auditor, certain amounts to be entered upon tax duplicates as liens representing expenses incurred by the city of Greenville, Ohio for its services rendered in phase one of the sidewalk project and declaring an emergency. A resolution certifying to the Dark County Auditor, certain amounts to be entered upon tax duplicates as liens representing expenses incurred by the city of Greenville, Ohio for its services rendered in phase one of the sidewalk project and declaring an emergency.
Move to adopt the emergency clause?
Move by Mr. Brown to adopt the emergency clause. Discussion.
Mr. President, just again, is this under the same-
That's correct. We wait as long as possible, because if we certified them previously and somebody comes in and pays us, it breaks up. And so, well, we had a deadline for everybody to pay on the sidewalks. We always wait till the last minute, otherwise somebody does want to come in and pay. It doesn't get tacked onto their taxes.
And then this goes onto their taxes for like five years?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the emergency clause? Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Move by Mr. Brown to adopt. Discussion. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moving on to number four. Resolution authorizing a contract not to exceed one year with Littman Thomas.
A resolution authorizing a contract not to exceed one year in duration with Littman Thomas Insurance Agency for the providing of liability insurance coverage for the city of Greenville, Ohio and declaring an emergency. This resolution authorizes the city auditor to enter into a contract not to exceed one year with Littman Thomas Insurance Agency for the provision of liability insurance for Greenville from October first, 2024 through September thirtieth, 2025. This resolution has an emergency clause.
Move to suspend the rules, give this resolution second, third reading by title only.
Move by Mr. Schmidt to suspend the rules, give this resolution second, third reading by title only. Discussion. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Abstain.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing a contract not to exceed one year in duration with Littman Thomas Insurance Agency for the providing of liability insurance coverage for the city of Greenville, Ohio and declaring an emergency. A resolution authorizing a contract not to exceed one year in duration with Littman Thomas Insurance Agency for the providing of liability insurance coverage for the city of Greenville, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
We can't do that, can we?
Yeah, do we have, if we have one abstaining, we're one missing.
You can still, yeah, you could only give it one reading, I'm sorry.
Yep, okay.
If you only have five affirmative votes.
Okay, so we can't suspend the rules? Okay, so we'll hold that to the next meeting. All right, moving on to, sorry everyone on that, I forgot Leon wasn't here and we had one abstained. Moving on to number five. An ordinance imposing moratorium on the assistance of permitting of regulation adult-use cannabis.
An ordinance by the city of Greenville Council imposing a moratorium on the issuance and processing of any permits allowing recreational adult-use cannabis operators within the city of Greenville, Ohio. This ordinance imposes a moratorium on the issuance and processing of any permits allowing recreational adult-use cannabis operators in the city. This ordinance states the council and the mayor of Greenville determine that adult-use recreational marijuana operators, including cultivators, processors, and dispensaries, do not promote and provide for the public peace, health, safety, and prosperity of Greenville's residents and wish to prohibit operators pursuant to their authority provided in O R C three seven eight zero point two five.
You want this to read three readings?
Whatever council would like.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
What was your question?
The question was, do you want it read three times and not suspend the rules? So if we don't have anyone to vote yea or nay on that, it will go to the next reading, okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
But that still does open it up for discussion, correct? There's still going to be discussion.
At the time of the final vote.
No, at this point, it still opens it for the ability to discuss, right?
That's not the authority of the chair that you can dictate.
Yeah, we could, we could, I just don't want to get, be here all night.
I'm not at home, I have some strong questions.
Sure. The question is, would we be better off making a motion to move this to planning and zoning rather than putting it all into this issue? To come back with parameters? Is that an alternative?
It is an alternative, absolutely. It always is.
Is that a smarter alternative for us as a council? That's the question.
That's up to council, Dave.
So basically, they could do similar to what we did with the medical, as far as like someone-
So the authority under the, while it's legal, the authority under the Ohio Revised Code says that cities can still essentially come up with their own regulations in regard to whether or not they want to permit it. They did the exact same thing with medical marijuana.
And I know a couple other communities in Dark County has already done it. I believe Versailles and Arcanum.
Versailles has, I don't think Arcanum has.
Okay.
They passed the resolution to prohibit it.
So continue it on, right?
They didn't take it through the planning and zoning. It was passed by council.
Another option would be to extend the moratorium or go for a year. If we're through December thirty-first this year, let's extend that for one year without having it being open-ended to give zoning and planning time enough to research and see what the tax base is and what apparent sales is and get something from the state of Ohio.
You have the way, you have the ability to regulate it however you would like, whether it would be the law of moratorium. Currently, you have one in place that I believe goes through December. You can extend it, you could revoke it, you can, you think of it, we can do it.
Mr. President? I would move that we refer this to the Planning and Zoning Committee for discussion and recommendations. Back to the city council.
Anyone else have any thoughts on that?
I think that makes sense.
So-
Do you have a motion to, to put it in the form of a motion?
Right. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to number six. Ahead of myself, I marked that one out. Ordinance allowing salary leadership at the police department to work patrol shifts, and this has an emergency.
An ordinance allowing for salary police department leadership to work patrol shifts at sergeant rate step E in order to avoid forcing officers to report on days off and declaring an emergency. This ordinance allows the police chief and police lieutenants to cover shifts outside of their normal working hours at the overtime compensation rate of sergeant step E in order to increase morale and reduce forcing officers to work on their scheduled days off. This ordinance has an emergency clause.
Make a motion to suspend the rules on this ordinance and read it by title only, second, third time.
Move by Mr. Godwin to suspend the rules, give this ordinance second, third reading by title only. Discussion. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing for salary police department leadership to work patrol shifts at sergeant rate step E in order to avoid forcing officers to report on days off and declaring an emergency. An ordinance allowing for salary police department leadership to work patrol shifts at sergeant rate step E in order to avoid forcing officers to report on days off and declaring an emergency.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Move by Mr. Godwin to adopt the emergency clause. Discussion. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Move by Mr. Schmidt to adopt the ordinance. Discussion.
Yes, a couple questions. One, as soon as, I mean, it's like paying anyone else, right? Like, I mean, we're going to pay the mandatory overtime, correct? So then I would ask, like, are we not able to pay what you're, I guess there's a way to pay your wage specifically? Because, and the reason I ask this is just thinking, I mean, myself as a salaried employee, like, what's the incentive for someone to want to attend, ascertain your guys' roles one day just to work more and get paid what they're getting paid at their current rate? Like-
They're still getting salary at the chief's rate. And then this is also a thing like, this is a band-aid on the situation.
Sure, but I'm just saying, like, I mean-
Yeah, I mean, some of you know me, some of you don't. I'm Lieutenant Joseph Monin, newly promoted over there. Essentially, this was the legislation that was drafted of. I mean, we obviously do make a little more on the hour as far as what step E sergeants do. So that would obviously be taking less than what we technically would be our, kind of have our base rate by this legislation that's written, correct?
How can, how are we able to do that?
So it's, that's the thing, it's like, this is not necessarily working overtime. You almost have to look at it, it's more like a bonus payment. Like, again, this is not a situation that we are trying to promote or-
Continue for a long term.
Correct. This is a band-aid and hopefully a short-term fix to help morale in a short situation.
But with FLSA, how are, like, how are we getting that?
We're not paying them overtime.
Okay, it's just, that's it, okay. Hit under a different line item. Okay.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Moon. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, moving on to number seven. A ordinance allowing, I'm sorry, number seven. Ordinance authorizing entering contract providing police services for Greenville School District, and it has an emergency clause.
An ordinance authorizing entry into a contract to provide police services for Greenville City School District and declaring an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the safety service director to enter into a contract with the Board of Education to provide police services to the Greenville City School District during the 2024 to 2025 and 2025 to 2026 school years at the monthly rate of seven thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixteen cents per officer. This ordinance has an emergency clause.
Move to suspend the rules, give this ordinance a second, third reading by title only.
Move by Mr. Schmidt to suspend rules, give this ordinance second, third reading by title only. Discussion. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing entry into a contract to provide police services for Greenville City School District and declaring an emergency. An ordinance authorizing entry into a contract to provide police services for Greenville City School District and declaring an emergency.
Move to adopt the emergency clause?
Move by Mr. Schmidt to adopt the emergency clause. Discussion. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Move by Mr. Brown to adopt. Discussion. Call the roll.
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moving on to number eight. A resolution authorizing safety service director enter in contract with precision concrete cutting for sidewalk project phase two.
A resolution authorizing the safety service director A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contract with precision, precision concrete cutting for services related to concrete cutting. This resolution authorizes the Safety Service Director to enter into contract with precision concrete cutting to remove 375 sidewalk trip hazards as part of Phase Two of the sidewalk project.
Move to suspend the rules, give this resolution second, third reading by title only?
Move by Mr. Schmidt to suspend, suspend the rules, give this second, third reading by title only. Discussion?
Call the roll?
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contract with precision concrete cutting for services related to concrete cutting. A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contract with precision concrete cutting for services related to concrete cutting.
Move to adopt the resolution?
Move by Mr. Schmidt to adopt the resolution. Discussion?
Do we know what to, what are the trip hazards, what are they cutting out? Assess trip hazards?
Yeah, so it's anywhere that, don't quote me, I would defer to Mr. Delk and his expertise on the sidewalks. But I believe it's any, anything that's moved, like, between half an inch but less than an inch. And so it's, it's the gap between two pieces of sidewalk that's not big enough to require a complete replacement. And so it's, if it shifted slightly, there's certain criteria that, being the cutting program, it's-
But the shaving?
They're simply shaved.
Ramp it up.
So this is in lieu of replacing sidewalk?
Yes.
This is a part two of Phase Two?
That's correct.
Another, another, a second, secondary part of-
Correct. And then with, we established this in Phase One, and I think the compromise is if you've got a slight area where it's moved slightly, but you don't necessarily, for the most part, the rest of the concrete's in good condition, this was kind of bridging that gap.
And where does the financing for this part come from? From the city?
That's correct.
What is that amount?
The amount in the contract for Phase Two is $32,676.
For this shaving?
That's correct.
Thirty-two thousand. The city pays, and it's not re, it's not billed back, okay?
And part of that comes from, you know, when we established the whole sidewalk program, it was pre-funded with the American Recovery Funds, and so those have all been earmarked, they have been earmarked for a project, and so they fall into that category.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Call the roll?
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to number nine, a supplemental ordinance.
An ordinance to make additional appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Greenville, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. A supplemental ordinance allows for appropriations in the Park Fund, Public Transportation Fund, and Sidewalk Maintenance Repair and Replacement Program Fund in the sum as follows. Equipment maintenance park in an amount of $10,000. These funds are needed for repairs in the park from the tornado damage. Maintenance public transportation in an amount of $567. These funds are needed to repair a transit bus that was involved in an accident. Sidewalk programs slash capital maintenance in an amount of $50,000. These funds are needed for concrete cutting in Phase Two of the sidewalk project as it begins.
Make a motion to suspend the rules in this ordinance and read it by title only, second, third time.
Move by Mr. Godwin to suspend the rules, give this ordinance second, third reading by title only. Discussion?
Call the roll?
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
An ordinance to make additional appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Greenville, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. An ordinance to make additional appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Greenville, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Motion to adopt?
Move by Mr. Godwin to adopt this ordinance. Discussion?
Just a question, Mr. President?
Yes.
The $50,000 for sidewalk program capital maintenance?
Yes.
Does that get billed back into the, how does, is that, is that out of pocket as well?
No, that's what Mr. Remer referred to as those ARPA funds. So that money is, the $50,000 is for the grinding. We just transferred a full 50 over as to keep it in them.
Fifty versus thirty-two, is that?
Yeah, the thirty-two is going to be used, yes. The 32,000, up to 32,000 is going to be used of that for the grinding. The remainder of the cash will stay in that sidewalk fund. The sidewalk fund for when we go to the second phase and have different repairs and stuff. You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Call the roll?
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moving to our final one, a resolution for the renewal of tax levy.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This resolution accepts the amounts and rates for the tax budget for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2025, as established by the Dark County Budget Commission.
Move to suspend the rules, give this resolution second, third reading by title only?
Move by Mr. Schmidt to suspend rules, give this resolution second, third reading by title only. Discussion?
Call the roll?
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Move to adopt the resolution?
Move by Mr. Schmidt to adopt the resolution. Discussion?
Mr. President, just, this is the 1.2 and the 3.8? This is the next step of that-
This is the final step of that process.
And it's exactly as we talked about, but 3.8?
That is correct.
Comes up to like $380,000 for the city.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Call the roll?
Ely?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
City council members, I'm going to be passing this around. Each of you need to sign it. And there is three spots, so I'll start with Dolores, and moving on from ordinance resolutions, we have nothing under old business, nothing under new business. Council representing outside committee, always glad to hear from Dolores on aging of the council, of aging.
Okay, I'll go ahead and give my report, and then I'll sign.
No problem.
Okay. The council on aging, we were part of the tri-county council on aging. They are going, undergoing a reorganization and moving forward from July, starting this month, really. They will now be operating under the name of Dark County Senior Outreach. This was done to stop from having so many overlapping organizations working on the same projects. So that's what we're doing. They have appointed their officers, and I'll put that, it's in my report, so as you can have it in a minute. So they've changed their name, they're defining their responsibilities as officers. Their banking bylaws and other things are being reviewed to make sure they are in order and in compliance with an agency of such. And what they're trying to do next is to undergo development of an email list for senior entities within our community that might not be part of the current. COVID did a real number on this organization. People were on the committee, then they left, and now, and COVID came, and they never come back. So we're trying to get them back. So they have been applying for local grant money to help what's going on with our senior citizens for activities. And I just want to report that Monday was Senior Citizens Day at the fair. This group, along with sponsors, served over 500 free meals. And they gave them a swag bag that had a couple of things in it. Some of the change of location with the fair board this year, there's been some confusion. So that caused some confusion on their part, but 500 meals were shared. I want to take a moment, and if I may, pass this out. Coming up in September is a senior luncheon, and that'll be September the 18th from 11 to 1 at Romers. This group is also organizing a senior Halloween dance, and that'll be in October the 26th. And this group will continue to meet on a regular basis, so I'll be reporting on their findings. So I urge you all, because I think most are 55-plus, maybe a couple aren't. You can attend this, too. So thank you, appreciate that.
Norris, with Senior Day at the fair. So we have a sign outside of our booth there that offers free blood pressure checks.